All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It is Thursday, April 24th. We're in trade and transit two, third floor. Please rise for the invocation by Vice President Eric Byder, followed by the flag salute.
Lord, we pray for wisdom. May we listen deeply for your daily invitation to share our talents with creativity. Strengthen and guide us so that we can be productive, effective, and decisive. May we generously serve our community as courageous leaders and compassionate neighbors. May we open our minds to discover new opportunities and boldly strive for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three approval city council meeting minutes from April 10th, 2025. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Any comments, questions, changes to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
And Mr. Yoder, yes. Motion passes five zero. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests. We'll move to item five, reappointments. We've got five reappointments, four for the Civil Service Commission, Greg For- Forsberg, Dr. Craig Miller, Michael Orwig, and Steve Smith to the Civil Service Commission. And then the Water and Sanitary Authority, Richard Trowbridge and Laura Templeton, both reappointed to five-year terms. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Mayor Slaughter?
Yes. Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Byder, members of council and administration. Guess what? You have before you, all of those are reappointments. As you said, to the Civil Service Commission and the Water and Sewer Authorities. As always, we appreciate their willingness to step up and serve. All of the individuals are doing a great job. From what I've been told and from what I've seen. And we're just lucky and we are happy that they are willing to stay on, all of them for another term. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, President Yoder.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Again, these are reappointments. They've done a great job prior. These did not go to a committee, which is pretty typical for reappointments, which is typically what we do. We do not do a second interview for a reappointment, excuse me. Are any of them here tonight? I don't think so. Yeah, I didn't think so, but okay. Any, any comments, questions related to the reappointments from members? We just echo the mayor's sentiments. We're gracious that they're stepping up to continue to serve in these capacities. Always gracious for anybody that wants to step up and volunteer in really any conduit we have to get back to the community through the city proper. We do have a few other openings in some other areas. Anybody that is interested can reach out to myself, our city clerk Janice Frank, the mayor and his office. Most of them are mayor-appointed, council-approved, but there's a couple, I think, Harb openings that are council-specific. So if anybody is interested, has any questions, please let us know, but thanks to the six of them for continuing their service. Um, okay, hearing and seeing none then. On the reappointments, Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
And Mr. Yoder, yes. Motion passes five zero. Mayor Slaughter, if you hang on, we'll jump to item thirteen. We've got a resolution of the city council to approve substantial amendments to the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 annual action plans for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Ms. Fessler, good evening.
Yes, good evening. Jamie Schroeder from Cita Cog should be on Zoom and she's going to lead us through this resolution as she prepared this amendment.
All right. Thank you very much. So this evening, we have a two years that were amending, 2017 home funds. We had some funds that were not expended that will now be allocated to the Habitat for Humanity Housing Construction. The total of that is 144,028687 to be reallocated. Same with 2018, there were some funds that were not expended on originally designated activities, so that 137,871 dollars and 20 cents will again be reallocated to Habitat for Humanity Housing Construction. They are aware of this and they do have a plan to get these funds spent in the time we need to spend them. And then 2018 CDBG funds, there's a historic rehab project that is finished, so that 5,132 dollars and 43 cents will be reallocated to Elm Park.
All right. Thank you very much. This was finance. I don't think there was really much discussion, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Allison, Mr. Byder to add anything, if there was anything of substance to contribute here from finance.
The only main point that we brought up in the meeting was making sure that Habitat did have project-ready. Something that was project-ready, so we could get these dollars spent in time. And then Liz had brought up an issue, not an issue, but a point with Habitat being the charity of choice, I believe was the term that she used, and making sure that that wouldn't, these funds wouldn't interfere with that, and they do not.
Yes, so Habitat is building six homes on Scott Street. They've already constructed two. They have four remaining, so these funds will go towards the third house that they're building and then potentially also towards the fourth and the fifth, depending on how far they get this year. And then every year, we are required by Home Guidelines to have a community development housing organization through a subrecipient agreement and give them 15% of our home fund, so this will actually help us meet those requirements.
Thank you both very much. Any comments or questions from other members? Okay, then, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Allison on item thirteen.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
And Mr. Yoder, yes. Motion passes five zero. Val, will you walk us through the motion you need us to make?
Yes. This evening, I'm asking you to make a motion to add an agenda item that sort of came to us late in the day today. We discovered that in the resolution that we approved in the meeting on 41025, Resolution Number 9907, there were just a few words omitted that we are required to have in the resolution to get held approval for our 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan. So we provided you at that time our fiscal year annual action plan and also our consolidated plan. And you reviewed both and approved both, but that was not effectively written in the resolution. The terminology was a little off, so I'm asking you to make a motion to add the language 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan to Resolution 9907.
Is there a motion in a second?
So, yep, please. Mr. Yoder, so the way that I would suggest you do this is you, what, what we're, what Ms. Fessler is essentially asking for is an amendment to Resolution 9907 to add the language consolidated plan. Is that it? So you're allowed to do that. It's required to do in two steps. The first step would be a motion to add that to the agenda. And then once you vote on that, it's added to the agenda, then you have to ask if there's any comment on it. And if there's no comment on it, you then can go ahead and actual have the vote and discussion if necessary on the agenda item that's been added.
Is there a motion in a second to add the agenda item?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes. Motion to add the agenda item passes five zero. Any comment from the public on adding the item? Crickets. I need one of those buttons. That would, that would be entertaining. Okay, any, any comments or questions from members on the changes? Do you need us to formally make the amendment?
Yeah, now you would say you're looking for a motion to amend Resolution 9907 to add the language of the consolidated plan to it.
Okay. Is there a motion in a second to amend as Solicitor White read?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the proposed amendment? Procedural, so. All right. What's that?
Nothing from Liz.
Liz, do you want me to call one of you to vote on this, or do you just want to?
I think we rather, I think I should wait this one.
That's fine. Just want to make sure.
I'm just.
I don't want you to think I'm ignoring you when I, if I don't call on you. It's all good. All right, Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes. Amendment passes five zero and then back to the main motion. Any other final comments, questions? All right, Mr. Allison, on the main motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Main motion passes five zero. Language should be fixed. Thanks for catching that.
Thank you so much for doing that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're, you're welcome. No problem. Um. Okay. Uh, let's jump up then to item six. We've got government relations and grant updates. I'll let the mayor kick this one off. But we've got both of our government relations consultants kind of giving us updates on grants, Melanie as well. Sorry, I, I saw him listed here. I wasn't sure if that was relations or actually the.
No problem.
So I'll turn it over to you actually, sorry.
Okay. Good evening, council members. As requested, I would like to provide a brief overview of the current grants-related work that is happening across the city, as well as share some recent accomplishments. While I, I will briefly talk about the work currently happening. I've also provided a grants status table with more detailed information for your reference, which is located in the Q1 update packet that you should all have. So I continue to collaborate closely with the Community and Economic Development Department on projects supported by overlapping grant sources to align efforts to make the most of available funding. I hold monthly meetings with each department to identify needs and set funding priorities, which are then shared with the mayor for consideration. I also meet regularly with our consultants to coordinate grant strategy and project support. You'll be hearing from both of them following this update. A key focus for me this year has been establishing consistent internal processes for setting and managing grant priorities. This includes maintaining compliance, tracking deliverables, submitting reimbursement requests, and completing closeout reports. I am also working to improve the collaboration between all departments involved at different stages of each grant-funded project, from planning and delivery to reporting. And we are so lucky to have Scott Williams with us now to help with the planning part of that process. I am working to ensure that the grant contracts are shared with those delivering the work so that we stay in compliance with funding requirements. Externally, I am meeting regularly with local grant-making organizations and legislative, legislative offices to share our priorities and strengthen relationships that support our funding pipeline. I also have been working with the Williamsport Business Association to support their efforts and continue our collaboration with them. The groundwork for all of this, especially the collaboration with other organizations and legislative offices, was laid by Valerie Fessler in this role previous to me, and I am certainly very grateful for that. So for some of our recent accomplishments, which are listed on that table that I provided you, I recently submitted an application to All One Foundation for the remaining $325,000 match for the Youngs Wood Park Improvement Project. We have already been awarded $403,000 for the DCNR C2P2 grant, as well as $80,000 through a DCED GTRP. I led this application with support from Delta on the initial proposal. Also in collaboration with Delta, we applied for $405,000 through a PennDOT multimodal grant for the High Street and Campbell Street traffic light replacement. Also working with them, $125,000 under the Assistance for Firefighters Grant for thermal imaging and cameras, thermal imaging cameras and portable radios for the fire department. I submitted an application to FCFP's Williamsport Like Humming Competitive Grant Program for $250,000 to support a digitization project for city records. Some applications that have been submitted and awarded within the last quarter include a $365,000 award through the Safe Streets for All program. This is for traffic and pedestrian safety plan and was developed and submitted in partnership with Delta. The CFA multimodal fund was awarded to us $200,000 for transportation enhancements along West Third Street. While this was less than the original ask, Bill Scott has worked to re-scope the project to match the new budget, and I will be submitting the re-scope documentation shortly. We received $3,125 through the Moore Grant for an energy audit of lighting at Bowman Field. The audit is complete and we are now awaiting the final report. The Office of the State Fire Commissioner awarded us $16,000 for improvements for the Fire Department's trading office. And then as well for the Bowman Field MLB upgrades, we secured two significant awards. $750,000 from the Sports Marketing and Tourism Grant, as well as $400,000 through the Economic Development and Community Development Initiatives Program. Much of the grant's work also includes ensuring that we remain in, remain compliant with every funding agency's requirements, all of which are different. A few highlights are the Pajama Factory, River Valley Plaza, Pine Street Square are all actively in RACPE compliance stages, and I am providing oversight for the city's responsibilities there. This covers a combined $3 million in funds. Our stamp two grant, I am currently handling reimbursement and closeout procedures so that we are able to start our next grant, stamp grant project. ARPA, as you're all aware, all $25 million of funding needed to be obligated by December 30th, 2024. The city is solely responsible for ARPA reporting as guidance prohibits outsourcing this work to consultants. Jamie Livermore really did the heavy lifting in this project for me to be able to keep the city in strict compliance required for this reporting. As a part of the $1.5 million PCCD grant that we received, I attend monthly compliance meetings with the co-responder team to ensure program requirements are met, and I would like to share that our co-responder is doing great and has responded to about 250 calls so far. Shaw Park Development Project, we were recently awarded funding from DCNR and Lake Humming County ARPA funds. This is for updates to the parking, including a pump track. This project is currently in the planning phase with a public input meeting scheduled for May 28. Williamsport Downtown Safety Improvements Project is a DCED funded project that was previously stalled, but is now moving forward thanks to Bill Scott. I was able to secure an extension for this grant to make sure that we are still in compliance. The Comprehensive Recreation Parks Open Space and Green Infrastructure Plan through DCNR. I jumped into this project during the final phase by participating in public input meetings and joining the steering committee. We are waiting DCNR feedback and then the final plan to be received from Evolve. We have an older $50,000 DCED GTRP grant for the Basin Street Riverwalk Connection. I applied for an extension and we are currently working on re-scoping that project to fit with the Old City Revitalization Project that we are working on with Keller at the moment. Muncible Fire Department Capital Grant for 99,000 was for facility upgrades. That project is complete and I managed the compliance reporting and closeout report for that as well. PMA Emergency Measures Funding for the Fire Department, I'm providing compliance support for that. We had a $230,000 Arlie Grant for thermoplastic crosswalks, which is in the planning phase, and Bill Scott is working with Lake Humming College via an MWO to round out that project. We have two Green Let Go Grants. One is for Little League Boulevard and Market Street for traffic light modernization. The first one is under construction and expected, or under design, construction is expected next year. And the second one is the City of Williamsport Traffic Signal Improvement Program from Mulberry Street, which is currently under construction with work to be completed in early May. We are actively planning for new applications and seeking funding opportunities for a very, a variety of needs. We are preparing a new application for the next round of the Muncible Fire Department Capital Grant in partnership with Lake Humming College. We are working on the Old City Revitalization Project, currently preparing an RFP for that. The ongoing levy project, there are meetings and studies in response to the recent $8 million in funding that has been released. For our police co-responder program that I mentioned earlier, we are looking for new opportunities to continue and hopefully expand that program. There's a need for a public safety building, which we're exploring support, including through Keller. There is a PennDOT multimodal that we are currently preparing an application for and looking forward to the fall, a LSA, which is the local share account. We're planning for applications for streets and parks purchases. We've had a strong year so far and I'm excited to keep this momentum going. Thank you for all of your continued support and collaboration. Please feel free to reach out with any questions or ideas for future projects. And I plan to provide the Q2 update at the July 24th council meeting.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Melanie? Without anything that she's involved in before maybe transitioning over to Keller Partners for kind of what's going on down in DC?
There are several projects that I touched on that they are going to more in depth.
Yeah, hey, I mean, rather than make you stand up there for like 25, 30 minutes, maybe this is. Yeah, yeah.
Don't want to step on their presentation.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on anything specific from Melanie's perspective?
If I may, President Yoder, I'll just reiterate. Obviously, I think after her presentation, the importance of that position, I mean, she's clearly doing a great job and I think I can speak for the entire administration when I say that position has saved us so much time and made us so much more efficient. So just to reiterate, it's we're, we're very appreciative of city council for creating that position and it's extremely valuable to us.
Yeah, I mean, like when you look at this, I mean, like so like there, there's a couple of different pieces of this, and I remember this from the discussion when this was position was created realistically last year, right? A bulk of what we expected this to be was compliance. And when you look at this total number, 49 and a half million dollars. I mean, I'm, I'm doing really quick math and I'm not the, the best at it, but I'd say at least 30 of it, if not more, is strictly compliance, right? So yeah, there's some applications you're supporting to the tune of what maybe, maybe $2 million in total. A lot of those, from what I can tell, and I'm making the assumption here, are maybe the lower hanging fruit that from an economies of scale perspective, our consultants may not be the best at going after, or it's just.
Some of them are more local.
More local, like that kind of stuff, right? So we're capturing some little hanging fruit, but a bulk of it is compliance. Right?
Yep.
And. And if I remember the dialogue correctly. When we created that position, a lot of this was happening, but just in a very segmented. Way by a lot of other team members across, right? Police Chief, Head of Public Works, et cetera. So. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's stuff like this that is good to see. And I think to put into context, a lot of, a lot of this outside of rescue plan, right? A lot of this is, I think, a lot of continual stuff that we've worked with for a long time. Conceptually, it's really helpful, at least for me, to understand what that work looks like. And that helps me wrap my head around the amount of time scope that is now freed up. By other people that they can actually focus on other things and the ripple effect that that has across every other department, right? When we start talking about budget issues and addressing budget issues, I mean, it's. It's people, it's time, it's, it's equipment, right? And the people are the biggest part of that when you look at our overall budget, and this is a pretty big piece of freeing up time. To hopefully make other people more efficient and enable them to do other things, so. Absolutely. That's good. It's great. Sorry, any other comments or questions? Nah, the, the mayor made me think of that conversation we had back in twenty three, so. It's good stuff. Melanie, thank you very much. Let's transition over to Keller Partners. I think a number of them are on Zoom in Washington DC. Mr. Keller and team, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Council President Yoder, Vice President Bider and council members. Yeah, there's a lot of hot air down here and I'm not talking about the weather. But things are moving forward. Again, my name is Tom Keller. I'm managing principal of Keller Partners and Company in Washington DC and. I'm also joined by my colleague Andy Garfinkel. He's our Vice President and Managing Director of Grants, Loans and Procurement. And as you all know, we've been the city's federal government relations and grant writing firm. Since twenty twenty one. And while Melanie did an excellent job of going through some of these federal pending grants that we have. Our hope is to provide you with a little more detail on our first quarter report, which I believe you have in front of you. And as you can see, there was a lot going on in the first quarter and it continues. But Andy and I will attempt to summarize some of this for council. But first, we want to thank the council. We want to thank Mayor Slaughter and the city's great team. And yes, we couldn't agree more. Having Melanie on board, Valerie, Bill, Bill Scott and Scott Williams. You know, it's just been a really great working team and we appreciate the council for doing that. We find that when there is internal support. It really helps us maximize what we can do for a community. So it's a good partnership. We've accomplished a lot together for the taxpayers of Williamsport. And with that, maybe what we'll do is we'll just hand over the microphone to my colleague Andy Garfinkel. Who will walk you through our report and take any questions as we're delivering this.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks. Thank you, council members. Good evening. We're pleased to have Keller Partners' continuous impactful track record on behalf of the city. I'm going to walk you briefly through the various projects we've been working on be behalf of the city this quarter. And also discuss our ongoing efforts. I'm also going to draw your attention at the end of the report, which goes through our track record to date. So to begin, I did want to mention the project that, that Melanie talked about, which is the Old City Revitalization Project. That project was funded in federal fiscal year twenty twenty four. With the support of Congressman User for a total of two million, six hundred and sixty two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. And that money is going to four major components. That includes city street light modernization. The Willow Street pedestrian improvements, Fourth Street utility improvements and the Basin Street Riverwalk Connector. And so the first step in that process is to hire an architectural and engineering firm. And this, we are in the process of preparing a request for proposals now. To develop the final plans for those, for those four components. This project is being developed in partnership with Lake Home and College. Lake Home and College has been a, a major partner in the development of. Of the Old City Revitalization Project. They've invested, I believe, about twenty two million dollars to date. There's been a total of about fifty seven million dollars invested in total in the Old City Revitalization. And so, you know, we, this is a major component and an ongoing effort to, to make those improvements in the Old City. The second project we've been working on this quarter is. The FY twenty twenty three funding that was funded through the US Department of Homeland Security. Also. With the support of the congressional delegation at that time, and that was for a total of eight million. These funds are in, their funds have been, were delayed to some extent due to, to some changes. That the Army Corps of Engineers recommended. However, it's back on track. There are several major components under that eight million dollars. That includes the engineering design of the electrical systems for the levy, the pump stations, the relief well. There's some underseepage issues there and the Dewey Avenue I wall design. And again, we are moving quickly on that. There are several elements under the eight million which can move forward now. And then there are several elements which will have to go out under an RFP. The third initiative we've been working on is the semi-quantitative risk assessment that the Army Corps of Engineers is doing. The cadre that was responsible for the SQRA has actually completed their work. They completed that in March and that. The SQRA is now going through an internal review at the highest levels of the Army Corps. The benefit of having the SQRA done is that the Corps can now proceed to what is called a chief's report. And the development of a work plan. And that, that chief's report allows the Army Corps of Engineers to participate in actual construction. Of levy rehabilitation work. So we're in the process of having that, that. Move forward and it should be completed by the end of, of May when that SQRA is released publicly. In addition to that, we did work on the, what's called the Water Resources Development Act. This is a biannual reauthorization of water, water system projects and flood control projects that the Army Corps of Engineers. Works on and we were able to, to obtain language in the Word of Bill. That covers two issues under the Army Corps. And that includes prioritizing the Williamsport Levy within the Army Corps of Engineers budget. So that's item one and item two is that it waives the cost share if the Secretary of the Army agrees. That, that the city and county are, you know, having economic difficulties and, and makes a determination that it is the Army Corps responsibility. To fund the project. The next item that we've been working on is, are two projects under what's referred to as community project funding or congressionally directed spending. Again, one is the Graphius Run Project. Graphius Run involves. Debris control and the debris control removal system at Graphius Run and some new automated culvert trash racks. As well as bypass flows. Some stream daylighting and recapturing of bypass flows. And so that, that's the work that would take place under a three point five million dollar. Grant that we've requested through the congressional delegation. And then separately, we also are about to submit a request for, sorry, a proposal. For five hundred thousand dollars for the city's new public safety building. So as you know, the Williamsport Bureau of Police is currently housed at the eight oh one Nichols Place site. That, that. Then the W P P station is not properly secured. It doesn't have holding cells and it's not conducive to the needs of a modern police department. So again, we're looking for. An architecture, architect and engineer to, to. Make a site determination and then to actually develop the site plans. So just moving on. I don't know if there's any questions, I can pause there or I can move on to the. Our upcoming priorities for the, this, the remainder of this fiscal year and into twenty twenty six. So I'll, I'll keep, yeah, I'll, I'll keep going here. The. The, the, our target, our grant targets include connect and protect. This is a Department of Justice Grant Program. This is funding that we would use to enhance the Williamsport Bureau of Police's current coresponder team. Which we understand has been very successful and this would help train a crisis intervention team. And to ensure that officers are trained in working with individuals who have symptoms of mental illness. We are also going to be continuing our work on the Army Corps' Risk Assessment Project. As I mentioned, there are two additional. Steps to develop what's called a chief's report. And a work plan, and so that is the next step in that process. And then finally, we will be working throughout the remainder of this year. To complete the successful community project funding requests with the congressional delegation. And that includes both the Graphius Run Project and the. And the Williamsport Bureau of Police Public Safety Building. And with that, I'll just point out the highlights of our work from FY twenty twenty one through twenty twenty five at the end of the report that you have. And again, we are happy to take questions and. Answer any of your concerns.
Anybody have any comments, questions from Keller Partners, Mr. Bider?
I, I do have a few. The first is going to be on the Police Public Safety Building. We had a timely presentation about a month ago. From a consultant that we hired to do the study on our city hall building and public safety building. And it would seem that you're about two zero short in the funding that you're requesting. From the number they were coming up with, they were asking for around fifty million to build a new building. The five hundred thousand dollars, I'm not quite sure what the plan is with five hundred thousand dollars for this.
Sure.
Bill, I'm happy. Oh, sorry, Andy. I was just gonna say, Bill, I'm happy to defer to you on this, but the five hundred thousand is just for architecture and engineering. It's not for actual construction.
Okay, so that's what that's going to be for.
We, we do wish that we could go after a grant. That would construct a building, you know, in those kinds of dollars, but unfortunately, there just is no grant available that could do something like that. So what we try to do is phase it out, nip and tuck, and. This would be one way to do it is to pay for the engineering and design.
And that's completely understandable. Can I chime in here quick? Mr. Keller and team, I mean, what's the timeline on this look like? I ask that because, you know. To Vice President Bider's point, the presentation we got and costs associated with even just a, a new police building. New joint police city hall building were substantial. And while I think we're working through some alternative options that were related to what came out of that report. I don't know that any of them are building a new building. And I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, this one caught me a little, a little off guard and so. I guess what's the timing on when this funding would be secured, released and when we would begin that process of. Selecting an architecture engineering firm and going down that path. I, I asked that really just as a understanding of timing because I'd hate to. I'd hate to have two kind of parallel things that are conflicting and then really your efforts be not super fruitful and wasted.
Sure, I, I think I can respond to that. Thank you for the question. So, you know, again, as, as Melanie and, and Tom referenced, you know, this, this funding is for site identification. And for design and engineering and so, you know, there, the city has multiple options open to it. One is to obviously identify a new site and build a new facility. Another is to renovate an existing space, which, you know, may, you know, be more in line with. With what's available from a budget standpoint, but you do need, you know, a recommendation and you do need the space renovated. And so the timing for these requests, again, in, in a perfect world. If Congress does what it's been elected to do is to pass a federal fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. Which would begin on October first, twenty twenty five. So again, if, if the congressional delegation is able to prioritize this request, get this project funded. And then, and then the legislation is enacted, it would be enacted by, by the beginning of the new federal fiscal year. So completed by September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and then the funds become available. You know, on or about October first, and then there's a process for beginning to draw down those funds.
So you're looking like really like the better part of a year. Ish. I mean, like, I, I just, well, six months is one that would be appropriate if it goes in there, but then there's a drawdown process that I remember taking a few months to get started. So really, you're looking at eight to ten months. So like the better part of a year. And if we decided that we did not want to go the public safety building route. Could that money be reallocated towards something different? That was maybe in line with a solution for city hall, but it's not a public safety building. Like what would that look like? Like if it's, if it's, if it's put in the budget for a public safety building for the city of Williamsport and we ultimately find or don't. Pursue a public safety building, does that money go away?
I think what Adam means is if we don't ultimately pursue a standalone public safety building, but we're seeking a solution that combines city hall and public safety. Can we repurpose that funding for public safety design needs within a combined structure?
Yeah, I think, I mean, as long as, as long as the, the public safety component is the focus, I mean, even if it's redesign of. A portion of, you know, of city hall that, that would certainly be, you know, an allowable use of those funds.
It would help if, if I could just, if I could just interrupt, it would help to know that in advance, however. So I, I think that, you know, we need to be told what your priority is and. You know, if, if this is a no-go, we need to know about it. Because we, we don't, we don't want to expend the capital and the energy to, you know. To work this and lobby for this if this is not a priority for the community.
Yeah. I, I think. Sorry, Maggie. I was, this, this is absolutely a priority for the community to find a new and more. Efficient and more comfortable and more functional location for the police. It is not, however, necessarily a priority to make certain that that is an entirely separate public safety building. And if what, I, I think if you were coming to us and saying, we think that we can get five hundred thousand dollars allocated this year. With, you know, looking toward getting another ten million next year for construction, then we would, then the conversation would be different. And we would be saying, we absolutely want to move forward with the standalone public safety building. But because what, what I'm hearing and perhaps I'm, perhaps I'm misunderstanding, gentlemen. What I'm hearing is you saying, we think we can get a half a million dollars. We have no idea if or when there would be more money. Then what we are saying is we are unlikely to be able to find the resources as a city. To fund the remaining cost of a standalone public safety structure. So, so you, you tell me if this is a lead up to a jumping off where we're hoping to, to acquire more funding, in which case we would be more open to the standalone concept. Or if this is likely to be about as much funding as we can get to put toward this if we secure this funding at all.
I, I think I can respond to that, Councilwoman. The. It, it's, it's our understanding that there is a need for, for new public safety space and whether that's. A year from now or five years from now that. You know, there, there is a need to continue to work towards the development of, of that. You know, that space. And so whether that's in an existing space. And, and requires a renovation and the inclusion. and, and requires a renovation and the inclusion of, you know, some of the items we, we talked about, you know, there is a cost to, to developing the plans, designing the plans for the space. And so, so that puts you one step ahead of, of where you were, and you know what the actual costs are. And so you know whether the renovation of that space is 5 million or 10 million. You know, it's hard to do that without, you know, figuring out how many square feet and, and then what is going to actually go into that space and what, you know, modifications need to be made. So that is, that's the benefit of having an architectural and engineering firm hired to do that work. Now, again, if you, I think everyone is aware that there are challenges at both the local level and the federal level in terms of so you're, we're not seeing a whole lot of $10 million grants for the construction of, of you know, police stations, but there are, there is funding going for police stations and you know, after discussions and not knowing the cost of what the renovations and not knowing where the facility is going to be. I think that the discussions within you know, with, within the, the, the city's team was that, you know, the best step, the best next step is to focus on the architectural and engineering component and to actually develop a plan and to, to assess the different sites that are available. And then to make a determination about which site, you know, is the best, gives, gives us the best option and maybe the, the least costly to, to renovate or build.
And, and if I may, Councilwoman, it is possible, likely that we could get language in such a way that it is flexible. So that
Given the current, not to, sorry, Mr. Keller.
Oh, please, that's, that's fine.
I guess just it, I, I think that what we are saying is the, the more flexible the language can be, the better it will be for us because given what I have already somewhat interpreted to be the federal outlook, you know, and, and a certain opacity to the view of the future and what the future might hold there. I, I, I think that we would be best off to preserve as many options, to keep as many options as we can open. We would never, obviously, never reject funding that would help us to find, to, to, to find better placement for our police force. But the bigger, the, the broader you can make the language so that we have some latitude in terms of what we do with that funding when we get there. Would probably be the best thing for us. That'd be my interpretation.
Yeah, and, and I would agree with that. And, you know, and look, I mean, so when we did that presentation for six weeks ago, I forget when it was, there were some revisions they were doing. I'm expecting the final one in any day. I'll, we'll make sure we get that final copy to you. But I think, you know, kind of what, at least what surprised me was, I mean, I don't, I, I wasn't of the impression that we'd settled on renovating anything formally or building anything formally. I mean, to be frank with you, one of the things that was included in there was the concept of leasing something. And, and I know there's been some interest in exploring what that would look like from both a short and long-term viability perspective, understanding what the financial impact of that would be. And so that's frankly, part of what caught me off guard because short of something changing in what's been revised and some of the feedback we gave, it's still going to be a large sum to where short of what, eight figures of, you know, external funding, it's going to be extremely difficult for us to do anything like that. So at a minimum, that flexibility and language would be very, very desirable, but I also still struggle to see that being the most fruitful use of, of this resource today. But I mean, who knows? We'll see.
So you'd be advocating. I, I'm trying to understand where you think that this the resource that we have in terms of Keller and Associates would be better off to direct this effort. Are we, are you thinking more something toward, in terms of a general city hall architectural? Well, because
None of us know, none, none of, none of us know. I mean, there's, there's a number of like next steps we've got to like flush out and look at, but I mean, I, I struggle to see us and I, I don't want to go into the complete rabbit hole of city hall. I mean, please, because there's plenty of other stuff to get into, but, I mean, I think it, it is very difficult for me to understand how we build or renovate anything, right? That concept and lobbying for any kind of funding and any kind of that effort is just, it, it's hard for me to wrap my head around because of the scale that we would need to do, right? That's, that's all I'm really saying.
Right.
So.
If you did some, if, if we could get funding for architectural design, though.
I mean, sure, if it's flexible, we could do it. Sure. I mean, it's not bad to have.
No, 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 I'm just trying to think. It seems to me like there would be a large quantity of design required, however you're slicing this.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying that I thought it could still be valuable.
Maybe.
I, I think, I think that's, that was the, the general point that, you know, we, we were trying to make, which is, you know, that you that there's, there's no, you know, there's no specific site that we're looking at. And, and any site that you choose, there is likely going to be, need to be some changes made to that site. And you're most likely going to need an architecture and engineering firm to make recommendations on how to make that site you, usable by, you know, for public safety purposes. So that, I think that's kind of the, the key point, and that is the flexibility that's allowed in the current language, but the, the funding is for A and E services. However, the city chooses to use that, but directed towards, you know, towards public safety.
Yeah, gotcha. Uh, sorry for the rabbit hole. It caught me off guard. Mr. Bider, you said he had a couple and I don't know if they were all addressed, so.
Uh, no, they weren't. Cause the other one that I wanted to bring up was the, the first one, the work that you've been doing in the first quarter, which is greatly appreciated. And everything you've done has been greatly appreciated. So please don't take any of this with a negative connotation. The preparation of the request for proposal for the $2.6 million for Old City, the revitalization project. Is this something that you have recently started or is this work that you are continuing from the project that kind of stalled over a year ago? Because this, again, this is not something that was on my radar. I think that there was other members of council that it wasn't on their radar in particular. So where does this put us in the overall scope of the project? In it being ready for a developer to come in and start to actually do something?
Again, excellent question. I think I can, can answer that as well. You know, Melanie, feel free to jump in, but the this is the, these funds have been essentially in discussions since November of 2024. The grants were officially awarded in March 2025. And so once the grant, once the grant funds were awarded by the federal, by the funds are through HUD, we then have the opportunity to move forward with the RFP. Again, the intent of the RFP is to hire A and E services so that we know exactly what, to, what, which of this equipment and what, what are these improvements are going in which specific locations? And then what the specific cost is within the total award amount. So some of these elements will move forward quickly, like the street light modernization, we expect to move quickly. Some of the utility improvements, we expect to move quickly. But, you know, there are some determinations that need to be made about where the, the terminus is for the utility improvements, where which sections of the connector are being improved, and then what's, what's going to maximize that work. So the A and E services will probably take about, you know, four to six months. And then we'll be ready for a construction of whatever those other elements are.
Thank you for elaborating on that.
Any other questions at this point for Keller Partners?
I guess not. Go ahead.
Not so much a question, but if we could just go back, Tom, I, something you said that maybe kind of got glossed over and it's that the effort and the amount of time that your firm puts in on some of these, you know, grant requests and proposals. So you know, I, what I don't want to see is you spending, like you said, your time to go after this $500,000 grant so that we can identify potentially a location for a public safety building. Hire an architectural firm to design us a building that we're never going to be able to build. So it seems to me that if we only have your efforts for a certain number of grants and proposals every year, should we be going after $500,000 for something that would directly impact the city more than a public safety way than in my mind, $500,000 to hire a architectural firm to design us a building that we're never going to be able to build in the, you know, I mean, so I, I don't know, maybe I'm off base here. But it seems to me that if we're going to tell you to go after $500,000 for public safety, I feel like there's a lot better options to spend $500,000 on than plans that are going to sit on a shelf and never see the light of day, most likely. So I don't know if that helps or makes things more muddy, but yeah, I mean, because, yeah, I mean, you talk about this presentation that we had six, eight weeks ago and, you know, every building for the police department that they suggested was the size of a Walmart. So, you know, I mean, so I don't know. I, I think this maybe deserves a little more discussion.
Yep, absolutely.
Before we say, go ahead and go after this money, because I, you know, at the end, I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we should be in the business of going after grants, just to go after grants. I mean, that's, that's a significant amount of money. It's a significant amount of time on Keller's part. So yeah, I, I don't know. I'm struggling with this one a little bit.
And, and Councilman, I, I really do appreciate what you're saying there because, you know, this is something that we face all the time with you know, a variety of different entities that we work with. And, and that is, you know, them agreeing to come up with certain priorities. And we always offer the advice, you know, we want to go after funding that adds to the budget, you know, that, that is budget relief. And if there's something that you're doing that, that we can go after funding for, that relieves your budget, you know, that's, that's a great thing. That's a supplemental type of grant. And, and so we just, you know, maybe the, maybe you all will consider this, but we want to go after your top priorities and nip away at, you know, the funding burden that you have. And you know, I totally agree with you, what you're saying, because, you know, there's political capital involved in going after congressional funding and even competitive grants. You know, we, we have a process that, that's one of the reasons we're registered federal lobbyists. You know, because we believe that while we're professional grant writers, we write great grants, but then we lobby the powers that be to win them. And it's, you know, no other firm does that. And so we're, our hope is that, you know, we're, we're given the priorities of the community. And then we determine, okay, is, are these things fundable? And then once we determine it's fundable and where the sources are, then we're, you know, we implement, we're on it. And usually we can pull off a win. But this is a, you know, when, when the backend is such a large amount of money, you know, I can understand your pause and, you know, trying to figure out, is this really the best use of our time?
If I could add, I just wanted to share a little bit of the thought process. It's Bill, Melanie and I that meet with Keller Partners regularly in addition to the mayor, who also has a meeting with them to discuss priorities. So Bill and Melanie and I took away from the conversation with BKV that the current public safety situation, they're building, it isn't working. And the other thing I can, I can speak for Melanie when I say the largest thing that Melanie and I took away from the public session with BKV was everyone who came to the podium said there has to be grants for that, there has to be money for that, there has to be funding for that. Everyone knows that the city's budget is very tight and that we're not going to pull the funding out of the budget. So Bill and Melanie and I talked to Andy about the fact that would it be ideal to have a public safety building that costs, you know, $10 million to build? Perhaps would it be great to come in with city hall? Perhaps. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what BKV is going to recommend, and we ultimately don't know what you're going to recommend, but we do know that two things are true. One, the current situation isn't working. And two, no matter what we do, whether or not we stay there and we add a little bit onto that building, or we try to go back to city hall, or wherever we try to go, there's going to have to be architecture and engineering, and it's incredibly expensive. So our thought process was if you come to us in six months and say, this is what we've decided to do with city hall, it will then take us another year, two year and a half to secure those funds. So our goal with this conversation with Keller was just to simply get ahead of whatever decision was made so that whatever decision is made, we can say we have a pot of money to look at the options. And that was really what our thought process was. Our thought process was not we're going to get $500,000 and build a, you know, $20 million public safety building in the middle of downtown Williamsport. That was never the plan. The plan was to just to really try to do our jobs and get ahead of whatever decision was being made so that we had the funding available to make intelligent decisions based on drawings.
So thank you for that. And maybe I should know this, so I apologize. Is there a clock on this money? So if we go through this process, we get awarded the grant, we've got $500,000 and we don't make a decision for 18 months, is that money still going to be sitting there waiting for us?
Andy?
You, usually you have three years to obligate and five years to spend.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel a little bit better. Yeah, because Liz's point, then that, this is when the broad language comes into, to effect. Yes. So.
Yeah, we were just trying to get ahead of whatever decision was made, so we had some funding.
Well, and I, I really appreciate that, that explanation because that makes a little bit more sense, a lot more sense. Yeah. So, so yes, thank you for that.
Sure.
And, and, and look, let me be candid here. I mean, the, the part that threw me off was, I mean, another part of the feedback from that study that I think there's interest in understanding better is leasing something back, right? And that is something that we have not looked at thoroughly yet, that we have the interest to do. So when I say like, you know, when I get a little spooked, it's really like, hey, if that comes to fruition in like two, three, four, five, six months, right? By that time, we could have burnt some capital that we could have allocated elsewhere. That's, that's the part that causes the hesitation for me individually, right? So it, I appreciate what you said there and that helps and makes a lot of sense. And that's good. So that's just where kind of my hesitation was coming from specifically. So. Any other questions for Keller?
Just, just a comment. Again, Keller Associates, thank you very much for the work that you do. We greatly appreciate it. And everything that you've done has been extremely beneficial to the city.
Yep.
So please continue to do the work that you're doing.
Yep.
Thank you very much. It's really, we, we love working for Williamsport and it's really an honor. You know, we feel like we're a part of the community, even though we're here in Washington.
Yeah, we like, that's great. That's great. Yeah, Mr. Allison.
Yeah, I, I think the conversation tonight has been really good. But I think it's incumbent upon us, and I, I think we all agree on this. We need to make a decision. We need to come to a consensus. And again, I'm not saying we're not trying, and I think we all are, but I, I think it's, it becomes more critical every day that goes by, that we were, were able to come up with consensus that's going to work for everything. And it'll make these kinds of decisions. consensus that's going to work for everything. And it'll make these kinds of decisions a lot simpler once we nail down that. So um and I think, I know we all think that.
Yep.
And I know the administration really, really, really would like that as well. So.
Yeah.
And then, then there's the public who just 10 times all that. So.
You're here.
Yep.
If nobody else has any comments, questions, um, thanks for the, to the Keller team, we can transition over to the Delta Development Team. They've been patiently waiting as well.
It's been a very interesting um discussion. This Teresa Sparassino from Delta and with me this evening is uh Will Lewis and Megan Sapor. Um, as part of the, the presentation and the, the document that you have, I wanted to let you know that we've, we've got a core team of five people that work on um extensively on the, on the city's work. We'll pull in other team members as needed. Um, Christian Muniz is our government relations. Um, he was a former, former lobbyist with um Pugliese and Associates. Um, Christian helps us with um the strategy um as we once we prepare the applications, just like on the federal level, then um we need to do the, the government relations in order to get your projects funded. Dane Higby is our CDBG technical support. So as Valerie may have questions or need documentation to help support her effort in managing the CDBG program, we rely on Dane for his expertise. Megan and Will are uh grant writers, research, uh, they will identify any new opportunities uh with funding, and then Will is assisted in some of the environmental as well. I'm going to have Will take you through. Now Melanie already gave you a high level on the, the grants that have been secured. And I will say too, it is a pleasure working with Valerie and Melanie. I've been working with the city, as you know, for years. And I think the, the process has improved by a thousand percent in um preparing applications, getting the needed support from the community and putting together what is actually needed for cost estimates, for some of the mapping. So having Valerie and Melanie, Bill um as part of the team, and now you have um Scott as well. It's been a joy to work with your team. Uh, Will, why don't you take us through the, the grants uh that we've secured and some of the grants that are out there um for potential to fill the holes that uh CFA um and some of the other programs where the awards were a little smaller.
Thanks, Teresa. Um, I'm, as Teresa said, I'm Will, so I'm excited to uh be working with the city. Um, we've in 2024 and 2025, uh Melanie went through these, but working with Melanie and Valerie, uh, we were able to secure uh like what, five grants. Um, the range of variety of project types um from recreation projects, Young's Woods, um and to downtown safety improvements uh and energy enhancements. Um, I won't walk through all these. I think you have this in front of you, and Melanie did a great job earlier at explaining the scopes of all these projects. Um, but this is one of the things where these have been our successes, uh, working with the city and the team there to move um and more projects forward. And then we also um have two pending grants. Uh, we have a Penn dot multi-modal for the High Street and Campbell Street intersection improvements. Uh, this is a signal replacement, uh, and we anticipate the awards for this to be made in August or September sometime. Um, so we'll, we'll keep monitoring this and, and see if that funding becomes available. Uh, similarly, we worked on putting together an assistance for firefighters grants uh for $125,000. This will support the purchase of thermal, a thermal imaging camera and mobile radios, so that everyone on the crew can be equipped with uh mobile radios. We also anticipate these awards to be coming out in September. Um, in addition to these two pending applications, uh, we were working, we've worked on putting in the scoping form for a Penn dot Arley submission. Uh, Arley is a no match program that focuses on uh traffic safety improvements and pedestrian uh improvements. We're going to work, uh, this scope is to upgrade the crosswalks along West Third Street, um mid-block at Susquehanna and at Park Interse- uh Streets Intersections. Um, we will, th- this is, we're in the first step of this, uh, we'll follow through with the full application in June. Uh, and then we're also working um to fill some of the gaps in our funding areas, uh, as the Municipal Fire Department Capital Grant. Um, and we're working with Melanie uh to assess the needs of the fire department and create a scope uh to put this grant in and make sure that we can get that funding. Um, looking into the rest of the year, uh, there's several opportunities that we have to fill some of the gaps in funding, um where projects might have been funded with a small, where we might have taken a haircut and gotten less funding um than anticipated for some of our projects. So for our West Third Street improvements, uh, we submitted a CFA MTF last year and came back with $200,000 um of funding. We're going to submit again this year and see if we can't build on that previous award and start to build our capital stack for moving these grants forward or moving these projects forward. A similar project that's been, or similar grant program that might be beneficial for the improvements to that area, uh, is the Main Street Matters Grant. We can request up to a million dollars for downtown improvements that sidewalk widening, um pedestrian infrastructure, areas that make the downtown William- Williamsport feel like an accessible, walkable downtown. Um, additionally, we're going to pursue uh a Penn dot MT, we have the possibility of pursuing a Penn dot MTF to advance some of um this opportunity. One of the things we always try to do is build a, a strong capital stack, matching our federal awards to our state funding and reducing the overall contribution um from the city. And in that vein, um, we'll also look at some federal sources, um possibly TASA, Safe Streets for All um to, to advance more of these project scopes and, and, and build that budget um space for the city, so that we can we do projects um and take away uh from budget, budget constraints and budget concerns. I think those are the major uh upcoming grants and programs uh that we're looking forward to uh working with the city to, to pursue and, and submit. Um, there's a lot of opportunity uh to keep, to keep building on the good work that we've been doing and some of these successes that we've had. I think the team uh working with Melanie and Valerie uh provides us the ability to create really compelling grant narratives um and have the assistance from the city to, to make sure that we can meet as many of our uh grant deadlines as possible. And on that topic, I'll turn it back over to Teresa to talk a little bit about how we um help with grant compliance and, and how we work with the team at the city.
And a, a few of these um grant compliance and technical assistance. Bowman Field and Destination 2014. Uh, with Bowman Field, and I'm pleased to announce that this is finally over the last hurdle. We had submitted um the special conditions package and the payment request to OB. Uh, the, the construction is in compliance. So we're waiting for the Office of the Budget to uh sign off on the special conditions. The payment reviewer with Office of the Budget has already reviewed the payment request, has signed off on it. So once the Office of the Budget and, you know, they work um probably more slowly than anyone wants to uh acknowledge, but um, once they sign off on the special conditions, then the city will uh receive the reimbursement of the RACP uh 600,000 less the, the two and a half percent that they're going to hold until their audit. With Destination 2014, that project is done. Uh, Melanie and I participated in the entrance audit. And we have the exit audit scheduled for next week. With PCCD, my role there is to submit fiscal reports on a quarterly basis, uh which entails pulling the um invoices and the copies of canceled checks uh that the city provides, along with the bank statements. And then uploading those into the PCCD portal. HUD CDBG compliance, we're here uh as an additional resource as needed. Um, and finally, our collaboration with city staff, um where we do meet on a monthly basis, uh, the city uh talks about the, the projects. We identify funding sources, we uh brainstorm on different funding sources for the projects. Uh, one of those brainstorms was the Safe Streets for All that was funded last year. Um, and that came out of our conversations with the federal Safe Streets for All staff looking for um planning projects. So it was a, a win-win for the city. Will determine the match requirements, the city will, will vet those, um identify their project sponsors, review the application narratives, obtain the letters of support. And then uh respond to DCNR and DCD after the applications have been filed. We'll reach out to agencies, uh submit, package the applications and then help with compliance if required. So it, it, like I said before, it's, it's been a pleasure. It is a pleasure working with uh city staff, and I think the the process has become more efficient. Um, we look forward to additional projects. I, I will say, um, you know, Will touched on this. When you talk about your federal resources, don't forget that those can match most of your state resources. So you, you don't need to rely just on federal sources to get some of your projects, your, your big ticket items funded. You know, there there are state resources that can match those as well. So if any questions you may have, we'll be here to answer.
Are there any questions for Delta? Ms. Mealy?
Oh, I was just curious, Teresa, what the state outlook is. I think that has been a big question for me. We all see a, a lot of stuff about what's going on federally in the news, but I have a little less insight into what the situation is with this, with the state government in Pennsylvania and, and how we're faring on pass-through funding from the federal government, to what extent the, the state has lost funding as a result of some of the budget, budget cuts federally. Um, can you give me any insight on that?
Well, I don't, um, and they're, they're going through the budget process now. Um, I know the uh multimodal fund had additional monies. I mean, the, there was an increase in the multimodal program. The Main Street Matters last year had a sizable uh budget, which they did, they revamped that program. Uh, it was the old Keystone Communities Program. Um, they revamped it and uh added some additional flexibility. The NAP program, and that's the, the tax credit program. Uh, the tax credits used to be, uh, I think around six million. It's increased to 17 million. So as of right now, the funding uh with, in the state level, and I know that some of the things that the governor wants to do, I think um maybe getting a little pushback, but from what we're seeing, we're not seeing a reduction in any of the state resources. Um, the RACP, uh, we're waiting because they have reached their debt limit. So we're, we're um, we've been working with offices like Senator Yaw's office and other members in the leadership to see if they're going to be um extending, increasing the debt limit to do another RACP round, because that's where we've been talking to city staff, because we have your projects now to the finish line. Destination 2014 and Bowman Field might be a good time to look for a RACP project and a new RACP request for the city. We can keep you further informed. That's uh Christian Muniz, who is our government relations, has his calendar blocked off for most of June, because he'll be at the Capitol uh during the whole budget process, giving us feedback on funding and, and what the amounts for appropriation for some of these grants will be. So we'll keep you informed.
Excellent. Um, did you say that there's been an increase in Main Street? And affiliated funding?
There was a large increase. Will, do you remember what the increase last year for the Main Street Matters?
Yes, they um put $25 million into the program uh when they decided to switch it over from Keystone Communities to Main Street Matters. And that part of that is designated for Main Street organizations. Um, so if you pursue the Main Street designation, they'll pay I think $75,000 uh the first two years, and then it, it for five years, it goes on a sliding scale. Um, it lowers over time for Main Street, designated Main Street organizations. And then they'll also have funding for uh communities that want to do projects associated with the Main Street in some way.
And previously, that budget uh was, I think, around six million. So you can see that they've started to invest and they're targeting core communities with those monies. So it's a, it's a good program uh for the city to use to improve both the, the aesthetics, or maybe even a project in Williamsport.
That was kind of what I was thinking, was I think we're going to need some upgrades and, and renovations downtown, and that might be something a pot of funding we should be looking at. Thank you. Eric, sorry.
Any other comments or questions for Delta? Um, Teresa and team, thank you for joining us um for all the work you do. Um, this was insightful value and appreciated. Um, we'll look forward to the to the next one um here, maybe in July sometime.
Very good. Thank you for allowing us to provide the update.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Teresa.
Have a good evening.
You too.
And bye-bye.
All right, um, that was a long, but a, a good, insightful, productive item, number six. Um, so we'll continue through the rest here and knock them out fairly quickly, I presume. Um, item seven, um ordinance amending part one of the classified ordinances of the city of Williamsport, final reading, motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion and a second, Mr. Mackey. This is second reading. Anything to add from two weeks ago? Appreciate your um um spearheading a, a, a small, but I think impactful approach to how we engage in dialogue with the public specifically, which is great. So. Um, here you can see none then. Mr. Allison on the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi? Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion on seven passes six, zero. Uh, we'll move to item eight, uh ordinance, a transfer ordinance, uh number one, final reading. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, motion and a second. Uh, the mayor should still be there. He's covering Jamie's, but um anything to add?
Nothing. Yep, nope, nothing to add.
Any comments, questions for members? All right. Um, here you can see none then. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion passes six, zero. Uh, we'll move to item nine, um ordinance transfer number two, first reading. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, motion and a second. Mayor Slaughter?
Yes, good evening, uh President Yoder, Vice President, body members, council administration. This is uh a transfer ordinance uh for the FTA P uh payment, transferring it into legislative contingency. There were, there was a question around uh reasoning behind that, and Jamie explained uh from a governmental accounting standpoint. Uh, the I, line item where it was, you would uh generally not pay it from there. So transferring it over to here is a line item in which uh it can be paid from and where it makes sense to pay it from, from an accounting standpoint. Um, other than that, it was uh reviewed in finance, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Anything to add from finance?
Just keeping effectively, um, that will enable us to use this money more efficiently by legislative contingency, which is, yeah.
Yeah. Um, any comments, questions? Any comments, questions on the first reading? All right, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion passes six, zero. And then we'll move to item ten, resolution authorizing an addendum to the master services agreement with UHY advisors. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second, Mayor Slaughter?
Yes, good evening. Once again, this is an addendum to the master services agreement with UHY. As you all know, we've been working with UHY since our ARPA funds were allocated to the city. And as you all know also, they were all allocated as of December thirty-first of twenty-four. We have until December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six for those funds to be expended. And we thought it was prudent to continue the agreement with UHY throughout the period. Jamie at times and Valerie and Melanie will have questions, particularly Jamie though. As we're making sure, as the various organizations start to spend this money, that they're spending it, A, in the way that city council approved it, and B, that it is compliant in that manner. So we still do here and there utilize UHY services, which is why we asked them for this addendum to continue on. This is through actually the end of twenty-twenty-five. There was a little bit of discussion at the finance meeting around that. And I'm sure Councilwoman Mealy or Councilman Byder, Councilman Allison can expand on that, but we figured at that time, this is still the money, we still have plenty of money allocated that we initially allocated under the ARPA for the administration for UHY. There's still plenty of funds there, so this is not adding any additional cost to that. And at the end of twenty-twenty-five, we would revisit that again to make sure that we would not be adding any additional costs and then extend their contract through twenty-twenty-six. And this, this would be on an as-needed basis. So we're not paying them. This is not any type of retain or anything. If we don't utilize Jack and Claire's services and UHY services, then we would not be obligated to pay them any money. So this is simply on an as-needed basis. And with that, this was reviewed in finance and I'll turn it back over.
Anything to add, Ms. Mealy?
I think they're pretty well covered in.
Any additional comments or questions? Good move. I mean, this is one of the first things we really pushed for, given the uniqueness of the program. It changed a couple of times since it came out, actually, as far as what money could be spent for guidance, that kind of stuff. And I could tell you, they were extremely helpful, notably in the crunch, at the end of last year. Well worth the money. I'm glad we have them. This is a good idea, notably. Should anything change in, in, in this program federally, whether it's later this year, next year, whatever it may be.
Yeah, I think they are going to help us cover our butts in the event that anybody comes trying to claw back any of this funding before the, the window's over, so.
Yep, agreed. They're on it. All right. No other comments or questions then? Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion passes six, zero. Derek, thank you. Travel safe. And have a good night. We'll move to item eleven, resolution award Bowman Field netting improvements. Sports Field Specialties. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. I saved the best for last, Mr. Scott. Good evening. He's like, he's just ignoring me. He's like, please don't do that again.
I heard it.
I'm just messing with you.
Evening, Council President Yoder, members of council. I have a resolution to present for your consideration. First resolution is to award a contract with Sports Field Specialties for the Bowman Field Netting Improvements in the amount of two-hundred-seventy-four thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. This project is necessary because Major League Baseball is requiring all MLB-affiliated teams to have all fans and spectator areas covered with protective netting this year. The city desires to contract with Sports Field Specialties as a sole source entity to perform the work necessary for the project. This includes demolition, repairs, adjustments, modifications, and extensions of the existing proprietary system, which is manufactured, designed, installed exclusively by Sports Field Specialties. The schedule we would like to follow is hopefully we'll get this awarded tonight and have the work completed in May. It'll be done before the Crosscutters' first home game, which is June sixth. I'll also mention this project is funded by PA DCED grant money.
Very nice. This did not go to committee. But any comments or questions? This is something that's been floating out there for probably the past, what, month or so, I think. I know a number of us are somewhat familiar with it. But nonetheless, any comments or questions?
The only clarification that I would like is that this is something not just required for the Major League Baseball Classic, but also because it is the Crosscutters are a member of the draft league. This has to be done to keep the affiliation with the draft league.
That's the Major League Baseball affiliated league, and that's a requirement of all MLB stadiums this year, yes.
Appreciate the clarification, Ms. Mealy.
And just to clarify, this is completely funded by grant funding. No output from the city whatsoever.
Yes. What we're doing is replacing what's there. It's going higher, it's being extended to cover all the grandstands and down the lines because our spectator areas down both the left field and right field lines as well. It's all got to be covered.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Here you can see none then. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion passes six, zero. Item twelve, resolution MOU between the city and Lickoming College for crosswalks. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Scott?
Good evening again, Council President Yoder, members of council. Another resolution presented for your consideration. This resolution is to award a memorandum of understanding, MOU between the City of Williamsport and Lickoming College. This MOU pertains to the design and construction of six crosswalks in the vicinity of the college. I'll give you a little background. Scott and I met with incoming president, Chip Edmonds and his staff a few months ago when they expressed their interest to do these six crosswalks around the college. There's four on Mulberry, Fourth Street, Bennett, Rose, and Seventh Street. There's one on Washington Boulevard at Elizabeth Street. And there's one on Franklin Street. We, we discussed the one at Elizabeth Street and Washington Boulevard a little bit during the committee meeting. Councilwoman Mealy agreed that one. It's pretty high priority.
Got very excited.
Due to the high traffic, speed of traffic there, and you know, the new baseball field up there. There's a lot of pedestrians walking up now on Elizabeth. So that one will actually have beacon, beacon lights there as well to give it more, you know, visibility. What else want to mention here? So the city, we're doing our six own crosswalks. I have that list if you want to know it. That was funded by Penn Arlie Grant, a hundred percent funded by a grant. And we want to piggyback these six on, on with those, you know, six that we're doing. It'll be as much, we think a better bid package, it'll get more interest, and we'll get some cost savings because there's it's just a better bid package to do twelve instead of six. So that's pretty much what I have.
Miss, uh, thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Mealy, anything to add from finance?
Yeah, just that it is ridiculous now that I'm a parent, how excited I get about crosswalks.
For good reason.
But yeah, I was, so I, I think these are, these will all be thermoplastic crosswalks. I, I want to say they have a ten to fifteen-year lifespan in the vicinity, and when when those crosswalks do eventually deteriorate, the city will be on the hook for maintaining all of them, just to be clear. Lickoming College is footing the bill for engineering and the initial installation of the six crosswalks there. They're assigned in the MOU, but they will not be dealing with long-term maintenance on those crosswalks. It's a relatively minor point, honestly, because the city should probably be doing the work anyway. We appreciate Lickoming's investment in the upfront cost, even if we're bearing the burden further down the line. But I am particularly excited about that crosswalk on Washington Boulevard because I'm hoping that it is the gateway drug to crosswalks on other, on other city streets that are Penn Dot controlled. We, we, over a lengthy digression in the course of the finance meeting, and I apologize again, Mr. Scott, for dragging you down that, but we discussed the, the fact that, that Market Street in general is in need of crosswalks pretty much along the entire length for either school, state routes to school reasons, or getting Lickoming College kids across the gap between Lickoming and downtown, et cetera. And anyway, I think this is a great first step, but I hope that we will use Penn Dot's permitting of a signalized crosswalk on Washington Boulevard as a jumping off point to get a couple for ourselves on Market Street as well. And ideally, maybe a couple. I, I know we discussed elsewhere, Delta had mentioned a potential Arlie Grant for crosswalks near Penn College that would also benefit from some signalization. You know, it's, to my way of thinking, it's time to start sort of turning back the tide on pedestrian versus vehicular respect in the city, and this will go a long way toward riding that, that ship, so. That's it. I swear.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, you mentioned that, you know, key point is that the college is paying for the design and construction of these six crosswalks around the college.
Hey, I would just add, I mean, I mean, look, the city and Lickoming College have had a really good partnership over the years. This is an example of it, right? Great example of what a public-private partnership can do, even on a small scale. I should say this is a small investment, but nonetheless. So we're, we're grateful for it. Very much so.
And I would also add that I have a cousin who goes to every single Lickoming College baseball game now. So, so I think the, the, the field is being well appreciated. Yeah, and I'm glad that we can help get pedestrians there more safely.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Mackey?
Bill, not directly related to this project, but when we're speaking of crosswalks, I have had several conversations in the last couple of weeks with Penn College employees specifically about Maynard Street and about the issues that are ongoing because of the new Wawa. And they're only going to get worse when Chick-fil-A. So can you just remind me? And again, if this is something I should remember, I apologize, but whose responsibility? Was it, or should, am I, do I remember correctly that crosswalks were part of our discussion when that Wawa was built? And why, and if, and if they were, why, why have they not been put in yet?
I don't think crosswalks were part of our discussion. I think we were concerned about sidewalk and access into Wawa from the sidewalk.
Well, they have, they have cuts in the curb. They did, there are no crosswalks.
Yeah, we asked about that, that specific thing, and you know. I, I don't remember exactly, I remember it not getting very far, and I believe that was really nothing in the city's control, right? But I remember bringing it up. I remember that was a concern expressed by a couple of us.
And, and Eric, in fairness, also mentioned it in the finance committee meeting on Tuesday.
So.
I forgot about that.
So, I know. I just think that that also needs to be put on the higher priority list, and, and, and if we're talking about signalized crosswalks, then there, especially because at night, you're probably having college students, especially when Chick-fil-A opens, they're going to be back and forth. And you know, I think it's for the three or four people here, and probably for the two or three people listening at home. It is important to note that in Pennsylvania, you are required to yield to people in crosswalks, which means slow down and stop and let them cross. So I mean, for what it's worth.
Just pedestrians have the right of
Yeah, just a friendly, public service announcement, but I, I, I personally think that we need to really explore these crosswalks on Maynard Street.
Something.
Like yesterday, so.
We need a solution. We can't take no for answer. I mean, I, I know, I, I've seen it. I know a number of people in the main administration building that walk over there almost daily. It's a struggle. They've seen kids almost get hit. I think there's already been a couple of car accidents there. I mean, like, it's an issue. We've got to figure something out.
Well, I think what was the turning point in the, on Washington Boulevard was a confluence of I feel like I might have actually been the first person to bring up the fact that we needed a crosswalk there, but then the college and the administration went after that with Penn Dot together. And then the college appears to be putting the funding up to make that a reality. I guess what I'm saying is if we could achieve something with the developer where we looked at some sort of like a co-funded project there and, and approached Penn Dot simultaneously, it seems like that would be the best way to make it happen yesterday, John, to your point. It may be if, if Penn College and the developer were somehow willing to, to help make that in the interest of not losing any students to Maynard Street traffic.
I, I do, this I do remember. I'm fairly certain it was Councilwoman Katz who first said we needed a crosswalk on Washington Boulevard.
You're probably right.
That was a joke.
No, I know. I just, but I'm like, I'm just do you know how few things I've suggested since I, since I, since I got this seat that have actually come to pass, John?
We are so close.
Count them on like one hand.
Yeah, Bill, Val, I mean, please look into that.
Yeah.
If there's anything we can do to facilitate something, aid, like, please let us know what that is, but I mean, I think we're looking to you two specifically to kind of spearhead what's the solution might look like, that kind of stuff. We're here to support you however we can, but let's figure something out.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And I would even say that all of Maynard Street in general, that street needs resurfaced, it needs relined with the traffic patterns changing. I mean, that is, that is a drag strip. As you turn onto Maynard Street from Third Street and off the highway and so on, you get four lanes sometimes of people trying to make their turns.
Yeah.
The whole
It's congested.
Yeah, the whole thing needs to be rethought.
Yep.
With all of the congestion coming.
Yep.
Sorry there.
But we can do that. We can do that separately from just
Priority number one.
Yeah, I don't know what was going on, but when I, when I got back into town this afternoon, traffic was backed up all the way. The fourth street was turned around. Yeah, it was wild, and it was both ways. So I, I made, I, I saw a few cars trying to turn in to Wawa there. So I, I, I made the assumption that it was related to traffic wanting to go into Wawa, and it was backing it up because they couldn't turn in because of traffic going north, right? But, yeah.
Well.
And, and that's not the first time I've seen that either, so it's
I, I couldn't turn out of, I couldn't turn out of a Penn College park, parking lot on Park Street. Because I think, now that I think about it, it must have been work around traffic from people avoiding Maynard. So. All right, well, that's a whole can of worms then, that we look at anyway. But.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Here you can see none. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion passes six, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item fourteen, except for filing Public Works meeting minutes from March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Controllers report from January twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes, motion passes six, zero. Item fifteen, announcements, next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Thursday, May eighth, seven PM, Trade and Transit Two, third floor, right here. Upcoming meetings, Monday, May fifth, twelve PM, Planning Commission, Tuesday, May sixth, eleven-thirty AM, Public Safety, one PM, Finance, two-thirty PM, Public Works, Wednesday, May seventh, nine AM, Economic Revitalization, Thursday, May eighth, seven PM, city council meeting. Are there comments from members of the public? Are there comments from members of council? Are there comments from members of the administration? Nobody from the news media is here. I'll take a motion in a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll see you in a couple